Looks like I need to get them back on.
Hi Chris.
Hi Doug.
How are you? Good, I'm doing great.
Great.
You may begin. Mayor, we are set. Did he disappear?
No.
Yeah, I think he just signed back on, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have his picture yet.
Are you on John?
There we go.
Here he is.
You may begin Mayor.
All right, this meeting will come to order. This is the monthly regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Prospect Kentucky, and today is September 20, year 2021. It's starting a little bit late due to technical difficulties, but nevertheless, here we go. The first order of business on the agenda is to seek approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting, last held on August 16, 2021. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to suggest to the minutes as written? All right, hearing none, I would ask for a motion to adopt them as presented.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Movement seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I savv it, those minutes are approved, thank you. And next is the mayor's report. First item is to note that the paving of Fox Harbor Road, Gunpowder Lane, Westover Drive and Fairway View Court has been completed. Mark Madison, our consulting engineer and the Hall Paving Company who did the paving, will do an inspection of all the paving this week. Want to note that the asphalt used contained Kevlar fiber which will make the paving last longer than it otherwise would have. There were a handful of reports from Fox Harbor residents about grit on their cars, but all but one of them have been resolved with taking them to the car wash. And the one, the one exception will be taken to detailing.
John, can you hear me?
Yes.
You really loud.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry John. We can't hear you. Can you, I didn't hear anything you said. Can you lean closer to the microphone maybe? I'm sorry to ask you, could you start over?
Yeah, I'll start over. Can you hear me better now?
That's great, thank you, yes.
Well, what I said was that paving of Fox Harbor Road, Gunpowder Lane, Westover Drive, and Fairview, Fairway View Court has been completed. Mark Madison and the Hall Paving Company representative will do an inspection this week. The asphalt used contained Kevlar fiber which makes the paving last longer than it otherwise would. There were a handful of reports from Fox Harbor residents about grit on their cars, but all but one have been resolved at the car wash. And that one exception will get a detailing, all at the expense of Hall Paving. Next. In about a week, I will be getting together with Mark Madison to go over the details of the plan for improving and repaving the area around City Hall. Third. The Prospect Cove litigation brought by LDG against Metro includes LDG's allegation that Metro Council's 2017 vote against them violated federal laws. Prospect is not involved in that part of their lawsuit. I believe that part of their lawsuit is set for trial sometime next year. I have been notified that I will be, I will have to give a deposition sometime this month, but so far I haven't been given a date. Next. The litigation involving LDG's proposed 160 apartment development east of Five Star is now up on appeal. The Circuit Court had dismissed the lawsuit brought by nearby residents, and they have appealed. Appeals generally take more than a year. In addition to this lawsuit, those same residents claim that nearby properties have historic qualities which would be adversely impacted, which would be contrary to federal law. And the executive director of the relevant state agency has written a letter to Metro agreeing with them. And since he wrote that letter, 90 days have gone by and there has been no response. So that's where that sits. Next. Planning for the development of Little Hunting Creek Park is proceeding, and I've asked Sarah Odell to talk about that, which will probably segue into the next item on the agenda, which is the Parks Report. Sarah also will give, so it will all be together. Sarah, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, sounds good. So updates from the last council meeting. The design of a pavilion instead of a gazebo is still in the works. The contract with Weber is still being executed for the master plan, so they've kind of started with some initial layouts and designs. And so it's still definitely in the discussion phase. I think they're still shooting for October in terms of completion, and there'll be a meetup and presentation from Adam McIntyre, who's the head of that, prior to handing it over as complete. As far as updates for the playground piece, at the last council meeting, we had discussed meeting up with Miracle of Kentucky and Tennessee. They were highly recommended by the director Creasy Mahan and other places around Louisville use them quite frequently for both their cost effectiveness, effectiveness, but also their quality. And that actually is a vendor that the city has chosen to go with. They have fulfilled their bid requirement through KPC and have signed a contract that was under budget for the playground by about, I'd have to look at the exact number, it's between 20 and 30K under, and that's fully freight. The rubber surface, the equipment, et cetera. And that was right at 100K. That, there is no payment due, nothing until 30 days after delivery of the goods, which would be in, you know, spring, April, May, something, whenever we go to install. That does not affect the grant that was applied for, that we'll find out for December. So that was QC'd by the city. And so that, there'll be no, no effect on that or hindrance, and also with ARPA funds or anything, there's no, no exchange of money for quite a long time. I believe that covers the update for Little Hunting Creek Park. I'll go into the Parks Report, sir, unless there was something you wanted to add, or if there were questions about that piece. Anything I missed?
Go ahead.
Okay, for the Parks update, I'll start with, Linda gave me some bullets to go over. One thing she didn't put in here is the meeting did start with, Carolyn Embry had brought up, and everybody concurred, a, basically a kudos to Linda for how well she has executed the budget and gone out to, to get inquiries about contracts and getting those executed and completed to be able to use her budget and then effectively help keep the parks going and and provide that great service for the citizens. So Linda did not put that in here, but I thought it was important to mention, to acknowledge all her hard work. All right, so the remaining funds for the budget allowed the city to engage with ICF for additional invasive plant removal, and that, a decent amount of that has already been done. Those were funds that were, we had covered some stuff in the previous fiscal year, so she had a little leftover. Let's see. They did have the contractors out to do the soil survey out for the bridge across, in Harrods Creek Park, the bridge that goes across kind of the canoe launch and out into the Orange Trail. Those guys did come out to do the four soil samples. They did have a breakdown of their equipment the day they got there, but they were able to change like a hydraulic hose, get it fixed. That's done, and now they're going to go run those samples, so that sort of portion of that contract is being executed. Let's see. I apologize because these notes that I got, I think I've printed the incorrect sheet, so I apologize. It's just taking me a second to, to remember the stuff from our meeting that we went over. There is an estimate for the trail repair. The bridge repair was $3,800. There's plenty of money in that budget. I believe Ron was looking into, right before he went into surgery, the timeline of when guys could come out and get that bridge repair done. And that's one where it's like an eight foot drop sort of thing. It needs handrails, et cetera. So $3,800 and hopefully that can be done before the trail bash, which is still expected in November. We're still waiting on correspondence from those guys. They basically run the show, but they do need to submit a permit with the city to be able to make that happen. I apologize that I do not have the correct notes in front of me. I think that covers it overall. So I'll apologize to Linda and you all that I printed out the incorrect sheet for her.
Any questions? Any questions? No questions. Good job, Sarah. Thank you for doing all that. Next report on the agenda is Forestation Board, Lee.
Yes. I distributed a written report to council, but I have some supplemental material. The biggest portion of forestation board activity in the recent months or so has been dead, declining, and hazardous trees. We're still getting reports constantly. In fact, I got two more today that aren't even mentioned in the report. Four of these situations are on city-owned property. I'd, I'd like to note that between the letters we sent out through Rick Wilson, a code enforcement and kind of general call to related to forestation. We've had 17 phone calls in the last 30 days. Each of those requires a written distribution of an email, and in almost every case, Andrea Hanlon and one or more Forestation Board members goes and visits the site, looks at the tree, and then finally the board will vote on if, if that's relevant. On our Tree Canopy program, we actually got one order, okay? That was probably due to the limited time of available for publicity. We're planning a, a spring drive with more publicity. It's, we can still do that within a money budget and a timing available. In the, in the one case, we got Andrea visited the site. It's, it's down in Marina View. The lot is very small, so she recommended a, a special tree that would be columnar rather than spreading out. It would be a good fit for that site. Ovens formed the owner, I think, I don't know if it's bought, but I think it's fine because when the owner sent in the order, they said they would take any tree that's available. A nice thing, the city will be receiving $300 for a memorial tree which is going to be in Harrods Creek Park. Linda Wardell and Andy and I will visit that park on Thursday to pick out the best planning site and maybe finalize the tree species. We originally planned on a swamp oak, but depending on the site, another tree may be more, more suitable. Also, I note that the, a great hemlock has been found by Andrea for the entrance area of Hunting Creek Park. And some 50 trees have been ordered for distribution to residents during the ArborFest. All the planning, whether it's memorial tree, hemlock tree, et cetera, et cetera, all be done probably in early November when it's a more optimal time. Any questions?
Yes, not wait, thank you.
Right.
Next on the agenda is the US 42 Safety Study Update. And Herb Schley paper, I believe, is making that report.
Okay, I will tell you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I feel like a Disney character. I keep getting frozen. So if somehow I get frozen, I'll, I'll try to come back. But anyway, on the 19th of last month is the, we got responses from the, from potential planning and engineering consulting firms. We, the selection committee, which comprised of the mayor, Sarah, Greg, and Al Binsfield and myself are the ones, and we're pretty much, it's pretty much working like an executive session because this is the way the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet has this process. There's a very specific process in the selection of the consultant. And it's very much structured by KYTC. Okay, we did meet shortly after that, the committee did, and we ranked the firms. We ranked, we then met with the firm, we ranked, A, we can't really discourage, I can't really just, we're not supposed to discourage names at this time. And that'll come to a point when the actual fee proposal is submitted. Of course, that'll be submitted to to the City Council. So we're now in the scoping, which is defining all the tasks. One thing I got thinking about is, in this process, we worked up a list, actually the whole working group of concerns and wants. And Greg Huesman has sort of been the, has, has put this together. And I, I think that would be probably good that all members of the council got that. Because we basically have given that to the consultant we're working with. So our next step are to actually get to a point where we, there is a, to negotiate a fee. And we have a couple of steps in there. We need to tie down exactly what the scope will be. We need to tie down, and this gets where Al Binsfield's help on the committee of what are reasonable hires. And then we look at creating a negotiated reasonable fee that'll be submitted to the council. And hopefully, we can get to the point, not really, in October, to have our consultant on board. Can I answer any questions? Okay, I think I stayed unfrozen.
Yeah, you did. You did well.
Okay, thank you.
And if there are no questions for Herb or any of the rest of us, we will move on into the library report. May I have Sandra? How'd the book sales go?
Actually, the book sale has been most exciting one we've had to date. We gave away, because we have thousands and thousands of books. We've given away many, many, and we still made more money at the end of the first two days than we have ever made before. We made over $700. And when you consider that the most expensive book was $3, and you could have five of them for $10, and most of the books went for a quarter or less, that's a lot of books that went out the door. We need to thank all of the volunteers who worked to have, make that happen. The books will still be up there and are going to be for sale for one more month, and then we'll be taking them down. So if you missed getting any, please come in and buy some.
You know, that might be a great article for our next newsletter, John, is to insert some sort of congratulations and list the names of all of those hardworking people on the committee there.
You stole, you stole my thunder. I was just thinking the same thing, Greg. All those people should be recognized, and we'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing is the Wage and Benefit Survey of Comparable Local Cities Report.
We had prepared a PowerPoint presentation, a brief one, but it isn't Powerpointing, so you're going to have to listen to us. Basically, what we're going to do tonight is to tell you what we've done. And then at the meeting next month, we will, we'll go forward with how does what we've done affect the City of Prospect, if at all? All right, we started with taking a look at doing a wage and benefit survey, and we looked at the available data. There is plenty of available data, but we felt that we wanted to look at comparable local cities in the Jefferson County area, because most of the data incorporates the entire state of Kentucky. And we didn't know if that was going to taint the data in any way for us. We selected, Greg and I have worked very, a long time on this, but we selected a number of cities, and what we did was pick the cities with a population around Prospect. If you draw a circle around Prospect and pick the cities with similar populations, that's what we ended up with, and those were Anchorage, Crestwood, Douglas Hills, Graymore Devondale, Firstborn Indian Hills, La Grange, Linden, St. Matthews, Shively, and Wendy Hills. Now you'll notice two of those are, are Oldham County, and we did incorporate them because they're close to us and part of our city is in Oldham County. We ended up with incredible responses, and if you had been here, we would have given you a copy of the questionnaire that we sent out. It went on for five pages, four pages, and the people were wonderful at filling them out carefully for us. After the responses came in, and I won't bore you, but this big huge file next to me is what we ended up getting back. Greg, the blessed person, put them all on an Excel spreadsheet. You've been sent that spreadsheet, and Greg is going to tell you what you're looking at when you look at the spreadsheet.
Thank you, Sandra. Could everyone hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Yeah.
So most of you can see the spreadsheet. It is a five-page document. And for those of you who don't have a copy, I apologize, but if you'd like to have it, I think we can get it to you. So we don't have the city names on the top of this spreadsheet. We did that on purpose, so instead of the city names, there are numbers, 1 through 11, and those represent the 11 responses that we had from the different cities. This, our data is not on this report. This is data from the cities that participated in our survey. And they'll be receiving a copy of this in appreciation for their efforts in sending us the information. And we think it will be helpful to them as well. So this is just a report. On the right-hand side is an average, and for those of you who can see this, it is in yellow. And so that is the arithmetic mean. It's not the mode or the median, it's the average. So I wanted to comment on that before I go through this a little bit, and there's over 1,000 pieces of data, so we're gonna, not gonna cover that by any stretch of the imagination. But if you just look at the number of total, total number of employees, which is in the, the blue section, the second section down, under the heading of number, classification, and normal working hours, if you look at that one row, you'll see numbers like total number of employees, 22, another city, 2, another city, 6. And then you go all the way across, and all of a sudden, 94 and 98. So when you have two cities that are so high, that skews the average. And not that that's a bad thing, but when we cover this at our next meeting, we'll talk about not just the average alone, but we'll also talk about the range in each of those categories so that the council members and the mayor and all of us can get a good feel for what that data represents. So I won't go through it. I'm certainly open to questions, but it's broken down into categories. It starts off with simple information such as population and income and the type of government. We go through the numbers of employees. We get into the police department. And whether or not they had their own police department, and how many policemen they have, and what their salaries are, and so on and so forth. And then we get into the fire department, same types of questions. And then we get into the maintenance department to see how many maintenance employees they have, what their salaries are, what their titles are, and so on. Code enforcement is another category. The mayor, we looked at salaries for the mayor, whether or not he or she is full-time or part-time, that sort of thing. Same thing with city clerk. And then we got into other job titles and salaries. HR managers and that sort of thing, treasurer, and so on and so forth. And then we get into health insurance, and I would really love to elaborate on this, but that is probably the, I'm going to say, the trickiest part in all this because, and you'll see on the right-hand side, it varies. Everybody is doing something a little bit different, but there are some standard things there too. So, but we looked at health insurance, and we wanted to look at the benefits and how many vacation days each city offered, what the benefits were in terms of leaves and holidays and that sort of thing. So that's pretty much it. I mean, it goes through, there's a ton of things here. But let me just try to wrap it up. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to field them, but we hope that this will be a good first step in us doing our next step. And Sandra will probably want to talk about that in a second, but before I leave that, any questions on the spreadsheet?
Greg, this is Frank. I want to say that this is a terrific job you have done. It's, it's unbelievable the amount of data you've put together. And it finally gives the council an opportunity to make informed decisions about things that in the past we've just kind of used Kentucky Windage to arrive. But thank you.
Thank you. I tell you, I've really enjoyed working with Sandra. We've been working hard on it. She's been a, a great force behind this entire initiative, so putting it together was the easy part.
He says that, but that's not true. He got to do the hardest part. I did all the beginning and he's done all the end. Anyway, next month, we'll come back to you and we'll show you the components of, of the Personnel Manual that's being proposed that are within the purview of the City Council. And we will show you the last time the council took action in regard to those areas, what's happening now, what those averages are, and what's being proposed. We have not finished that report yet, but that's our goal for next month.
All right, I take it that's the end of your report. I want to add my thanks to those expressed by Frank culture. It's a valuable study. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the police report, except I don't see any policeman.
I'm here. It's Tony. Can you hear me?
I hear, I hear somebody.
Yeah, he's, he's going to come up to the head table. John, he'll be right here.
We can hear you fine, Tony.
Okay. Feel free to use that gavel too, Tony.
Yeah, don't, don't hesitate. I will use this cap. All right, thank you all very much. I'll go through a few things here. I want to tie two things together. Our house watch, I think, is an outstanding service that we, that we do for our citizens. It is up this month, which I love seeing that because that means we are in your neighborhoods, and we are out walking around houses for the most part, except for during the late shift and being visible. That's the most important thing I think we do back in these neighborhoods. Tie this back in, we continue to see some of the carjackings and stolen vehicles that are occurring around our area. We recovered one of those stolen vehicles over at River and Mayfair. A couple nights ago, one of our late watch guys found a vehicle over there wrecked, just doing regular patrol as he came off of Timber Ridge. We have seen a decrease in people out in the neighborhoods rummaging through the vehicles. And I, I hope, it's hard to measure at times, but I hope some of that is to do with the educational part of people are locking their vehicles, making them more secure. And the vehicles that we did have rummaged through had nothing taken of any significance. So I think people are to a certain extent heeding the fact that they're not leaving stuff in their vehicles. And the main thing, they're not leaving keys in the vehicles, which we had, I think the chief talked about it last month. Up on Fox Harbor on Gunpowder, uh, we had a lady that left keys in a vehicle. Um, and we searched for that for days and it was found out off Crone's Lane. So we did have some characters coming out this way. They immediately did not come back out. I don't believe in any of the neighborhoods because they did not find anything else. When they came back out, probably the second time, we had some people go through some things over in the Sutherland's. So keep that campaign up and let your neighbors know, lock everything up. If you are, if you refuse to lock your car, which some people do, don't leave anything in it. That's our main task. Do not leave anything in those vehicles. The less success they have out here, the more they're not going to come back. And I guarantee you, that is what's happening right now. We did have, and but what I'm tying in, the house watch, they're out on, that late watches riding around the neighborhoods doing the house watches, even though they're not riding around, they're out in the neighborhoods. And I think that's a valuable tool that we can tie in to a crime decrease. I really believe that. The, the stolen vehicle, like I said, we had last month, that's been resolved. The country club, we've had about three and probably the last three months, vehicles broken into in daylight about probably around three o'clock at the country club. We did get a guy on video camera using credit cards from the last one that occurred on eight twenty-two. We've sent that out to all various agencies. Uh, we've not got any identification back on that guy. Uh, we're up there daily around that time. Uh, the clubhouse is a fantastic partner with us. We've not had another one since then, but we do, we, we do have a little bit of a lead on that guy starting out. That's all crime wise. I will talk about one quick thing that I think, uh, does not involve Prospect, but it's a matter of public record that, that there was a young man that was arrested, a nineteen-year-old that lives in Prospect. The offense occurred in Plaski County. We just assisted their sheriff's department with serving a warrant. It was a sexual abuse warrant. Young man was involved with a fifteen-year-old that, um, that he attends U of L here, was staying with his grandparents in Prospect. I don't believe that's the case anymore. I think he's had to move out. But we assisted them in serving a warrant. So that's a matter of public record. So if anybody was ever to ask, the offense did not occur in Prospect. That young man did live here and we assisted Plaski County. So his name would be in the jail system as being arrested in case anybody ever asked. That, that did not occur here. Uh, just a bit of, uh, housekeeping information. Officer Jim Wood on late watch will be retiring for good. Uh, Jim has spent a long, long career with Metro, spent some time at Graymore-Devondale and has spent the last few years here. Jim is a fantastic asset that works on her late shift. Uh, he will be retiring. Uh, he's had some health issues within last year, but, uh, he's gonna retire, spend time with his wife and do some traveling. Uh, we will be moving Officer Tony Leish, uh, to a full-time position. Officer Gray, who works our seven to three, which is seven PM to three AM shift, will go to the light watch. Tony will take over at that position from there. So we'll be looking to hire somebody, um, for a part-time position and we're, we're already working on that ASAP. So we have a great crew. We hate to lose Jim, but we'll, we'll get somebody in here that loves Prospect just like we do. So that is it from our report. If there's any questions, be glad to answer them.
All right. Thanks very much, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Tony.
Uh, next on the agenda is unfinished business. And following that is new business. Under new business is a presentation of the Kentucky Anna Regional Planning and Development Agency, sometimes known as KIPTA. And they are making a proposal to manage Prospect's proceeds from the American Rescue Plan Act and a presentation will, I think be made by Danielle Story, who's been sitting there very patiently since we started this meeting. Danielle, do you have anything to tell us?
Hi, am I to go ahead and get started?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, hello, everyone. This is my first time attending Prospect City Council meeting. Nice to meet you all. Um, even though it's, it's virtually, uh, yeah. So KIPTA, I don't know if you all are familiar with KIPTA as an area development district, but KIPTA does a wide range of things. So we have a, a social services division, a transportation division, and a community economic development division. So we do everything for our social services, offers help for aging and, and disabled folks. That's everything from meal assistance to medical transport to in-home care, uh, transportation planning. Um, we are the area's, uh, metropolitan planning organization. So any, any transportation project wanting to utilize federal funds comes through our, our transportation division. And then our community economic development division, that, that's my division. We assess local, um, local governments and in our seven county region, uh, with, with various things everywhere from, from grant assistance and administration to loans for infrastructure projects. Uh, we also do the, uh, we keep the region in compliance with FEMA and with the Economic Development Administration. So we do the region's hazard mitigation plan to make sure that if you all do experience a hazard and would like to apply for funding, you will be eligible to do so. Uh, we also do the region's comprehensive economic development plan. Same thing, if you all decided to apply for funding through the EDA or, or any entity within the region, that you would be eligible to do so. We assist with comp plans and zoning ordinances and, uh, you sort of name it. Uh, we are, um, sort of by, by default become extensions of local government staff. So, and we've been around for about fifty years. Um, and in the, in that vein, so with everything that's going on, um, you know, with, you know, with COVID and with the CARES Act and then now the American Rescue Plan Act, we decided we wanted to offer administrative services, um, to our cities and counties uh, to assist with what is, you know, quite the burdensome, burdensome task of, of, of reporting and, and navigating the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, so our, our offer is to charge one percent of your total allocation to assist you with all your reporting requirements. So that would be assisting you with getting your portal set up, uh, doing research on your behalf and communicating with KLC and to get legal advice on, on your expenditures or your proposed expenditures. We would make sure that you are keeping all the proper documentation and filing system as well as collecting all the necessary data that's required for those expenditures and then making sure that all gets reported appropriately. Um, the offer, of course, your reporting requirements are for a minimum of five years. It can go on beyond that, depending on how you all spend your funds. So KIPTA's, that would be, KIPTA would be, that the one percent fee covers that entire duration. Um, and, and that, we think that that's an important note because we really want to make sure that, that, that our cities and counties have continuity. Um, because people retire and people move and people leave and, 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 you know, city councils change out. And so you want to make sure that you have somebody that's familiar, um, with what, in, in keeping your, your, your city in compliance. Um, I'll, I'll just sort of leave it at that and I'll let you, I'll, I'll open up the, um, for any sort of questions that you all have about KIPTA or, or ARPA in general.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
I sure can.
One of the things that several of us have puzzled over is, okay, here we have these hundreds of thousands of dollars, ultimately a million dollars plus.
Mm-hmm.
And what can we do with it safely and what can't we do with it? And I don't know about anybody else, but it seems to me that the instructions that we've got are not something that you can, pardon the phrase, take to the bank.
Yeah, right.
It seems to me, just looking at what you have to offer, that assistance with making those determinations is worth a great deal more than what you're charging. If it turns out that we can spend X thousand dollars on something we otherwise wouldn't have done, we'd made money right there. This isn't a question. It's just sort of the way I'm looking at it for anybody to comment upon.
Danielle has a question. My understanding was the ARPA funds can be used to pay for this proposal. Is that accurate? And then I guess my second question, or, or, I'm sorry, I stepped on you. You meant saying it again.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Yes, that's correct. You can, you can use the ARPA funds to pay for our administration fee. That's correct.
And then there, are there other, I think there are other cities that have jumped into this as well. Is that something you're allowed to say who?
Yeah, we've had, we've had multiple cities. Uh, we have some, we still have some in the works. We have, yeah, the city of, uh, we have Shelbyville, we have Middletown, we have Douglas Hills. Um, we have Newcastle, we have Eminence, we have, there's, there's, there's a, there's a long, a long list there. Um, uh, of cities that were assisting.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. I'm sure other people have questions. That's all I had. So thank you for clearing up. The ARPA funds pay for this. So.
Yeah.
From, from my opinion, that, that is the.
I, I don't actually.
Greatest.
I don't have a question. I, I do have a comment as the city attorney. I think this is far and away the most efficient, uh, effective way to accomplish our objective. Uh, you all can send me to school. Uh, you all can go to school. We can try to reinvent the wheel, but, um, uh, they can do it for uh, a tenth or less of the cost of what we could do it for. And, and more importantly, they provide the credibility and insulation, uh, when we have a contract with them. So I, I would strongly recommend that we have a contract with them.
Mayor.
I'd like to ask a question. I heard you make a similar presentation to the Jefferson County League of Cities. And one of the things that it, it was fine, and I think you do a fine job. But one of the things that came through to me quite clearly in that was that you did not help select what the individual projects are, that the project selection was the responsibility for the city. And you kept, stepped in to help with the paper trail, which I agree is incredibly complicated. Is, is that accurate?
That is correct because I am not the authority on, on your all city. Now I can help you try to come up with, like I said, we will, um, help research. We are engaged with the other area development districts across the state. Here are also offering the same, same service for their cities and counties. And, and therefore we get, we get to share in a lot of what other cities are doing and how they're utilizing their funds. So, so we have a lot of pool, a lot of, of information to pull from for you all. So what we do, yes, is simply advise, I'll say, you all say, hey, these are a list of projects that we're thinking that we would like to do. And what I, what I would do and my staff would do would then go through and see which ones we think that are eligible uh, and which ones we just know right away are not. And then the ones that are eligible, we will make sure, we will start gathering what we think that, uh, we will get confirmation that they're eligible from, uh, KLC. Um, and, and to get some legal, you know, um, advice on each of those projects. And sometimes they offer, let's say, oh, this is, this is an eligible project, but it should be done in this way. They give some, some nice tips on that. What we do then, well, I will bring that back to city council. Your list of projects, any sort of documentation that we have via sample resolutions, communication from KLC's attorneys, um, and then offer that to you all so that you, you and your legal counsel can make an informed decision. No, I do not use or decide projects. I just offer you all the appropriate information so that you all can be informed while you're making decisions.
So we would develop the list of projects. They would be submitted with your help to KLC. And then you would step in to help keep us on track with our record keeping. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. How we will do that is we would create a shared drive on, uh, we send you a, a, a shared drive. We have a Gmail account that we would create a shared drive so that way we have access to it and you all also have access to it. Uh, we will organize all of your files because there's, there are, uh, dependent on the expenditure, there's, there's a narrative that has to be created for expenditure justifying that expense. There should be a resolution passed related to each expenditure. Um, you will also have a list of data that might need, might need to be collected, what, you know, demographic data. So you have to, if you're not in a qualified census tract for, for an expenditure, you have to make a justification that there were, um, potentially, you know, uh, data related to demographics, um, for population that were disproportionately affected by COVID, aging population, children, disabled folks. So we need to gather that data and we would gather that data for you and, and have that filed away so that you have every, every required piece of reporting information in a file and organized as such, so that you, you could keep that, um, keep it, so it'd be very clear and, and easy to access. And you all can also upload additional documentation into those files as well.
Well, we are a small, primarily residential city and we do not have any of the census tracts that will allow easier use of this money. Our biggest problem right now, as you've heard our mayor say, is developing what we could spend the money on.
Right.
And that, that is a very real issue for us.
Right. And so that would be part of what we would go through is, um, in our conversation, you know, we, we would schedule a meeting to, to sort of only to flush this out specifically uh, and go over, you know, just, I, I would want to learn more about what, what you have going on in your city. Um, you know, what exactly is available you can spend money on, on, I know very clear things that a lot of cities, you know, uh, thus far anyways, have, have expressed a desire to send folks money on. Water, wastewater, uh, stormwater projects, park projects. Uh, and again, I do think that you, you may not be a qualified census tract, but I, I haven't looked up your demographic data, but I'm certain that I can, that there's probably demographic data that we could justify for, um, for that population group. Again, it, it, it can, it doesn't have to be, uh, the designated qualified census tract. That.
I understand that, but we tend to be middle class also.
Right, but it doesn't matter. Your income isn't, it, low income population is a, a, um, a sector of the population, yes, that this, this, these, these funds are being targeted towards, but also aging population. I'm going to guess that you have a significant sixty-five plus aging population um, that, that are, are considered one of the, the groups that are, are, would have been, um, overly affected by, by COVID.
Mayor, may I, may I be recognized?
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we authorize you as the mayor of Prospect get here into the agreement with KIPTA on the form that they have, uh, provided to us to, uh, employ them to assist with, you know, with these funds.
Just to be clear, are you making that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I think Don's saying second potentially, but if not, I'll, I'll second. I think he's on mute.
Yeah, Don, if you've made a second, I couldn't hear you. All right, Sarah, are you seconding the motion? Sarah?
Sorry, I'm on, uh, mute.
Yes, I made the motion, yes. Don, did you second the motion?
Yes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the, uh, what the life of the proposal is.
The life of the required reporting, it should be a minimum of five years. It could potentially go on.
No, no, your proposal, your proposal to us to perform these services.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean, the, 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 um, the proposal is valid whenever you all would like to step in. I, I, I am going to note that if you all want assistance, your first report, your first report, um, is due the end of October. So if you all want us to assist with your October reporting, then we would need to have this proposal signed by the first of October to allow ample time to help you all get, um, your account set up in the treasury portal and to get everything organized. Even if you all don't expend any money, you still have to do reporting this first round. So if you want our assistance with that, with that, we would, we would need to get you under contract by the first of October so we can get out there and get everything set up. But if you all want to tackle that on your own, that's fine. Our, our proposal is still valid at any other time that you would like for us to assist. But if it's after, um, you know, if, if it's too close into that October deadline for your first report, we won't be able to assist on that.
Okay, what, what, uh, does the October report consist of?
It, it is where you list your line item expenditures. So, and it's where you designate. So you're, so there'll, there's a process of, of coordinating. Uh, getting your account set up in the treasury portal. There's, there'll be a person from the city that'll need to be signed to that. We identify roles. One of those roles will be going to KIPTA staff. There's an ID me identification system that we process that we have to go through first to actually get the portal set up. So that's, that's a bit of a process. We'll, we'll walk, talk through those steps, um, a, a, a bit down the road, but, um, and then once we get that, we have, you'll have your line item expenditures. Uh, so if you all have by that time actually, you know, chosen to utilize ARPA funds for a project, we go in and label it based on the treasury's, um, guidance for how those line, for how that expenditure should be. we go in and label it based on the treasury's, um, guidance for how those line, for how that expenditure should be, um, um, filed. And so we, we put all that information in there and, and submit. Uh, it's, it's fair, it's, um, when there's no expenditure, that makes the process, you know, subs, you know, less involved. Now, if there are, um, if you have expenditures, that's where we enter in the line item, where it falls under related to treasury guidelines. A narrative that gets submitted justifying that, that expenditure, then the data that, that we would need to submit. Coordinating, you know, again, it depends on the line item, but.
Isn't, isn't part of that, uh, that report of a requirement that we have a plan for those expenditures? We're talking as if, as if the money has been spent. Are we talking about future expenditures? Uh, with this report?
No. It's once you have already, once you've already decided to utilize the fund, you maybe haven't paid it out, but you have, you have, have them in your, you have approved to utilize those funds. So once you, once you have, have those obligated, then that's when you report.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment, uh, to piggyback on Frank's, uh, comment a little bit. So I've looked at the KLC website. Uh, you mentioned KLC a while ago. Uh, we've long time members of KLC and, uh, great respect for them as well. We, we like Kipta as well. Y'all do great work too. Uh, so, um, but my only thinking is that, um, but there's no hurry for us to make a decision tonight. Um, so, um, your, your offer is still on the table into the future.
That's correct. We just would not be assisting you with your first report that is due in October 31st.
And, uh, so the reason I ask that is, um, it's my understanding that more information is forthcoming. And so when I say that, I mean, information on what exactly the kinds of things are that we will be allowed, the cities will be allowed to spend this money on. And so I'd really like to have, uh, before voting on this tonight, um, I hope that my fellow council members would, uh, go along with this. I'd really like to have more time to see how likely is it that we will have anything, uh, that the city of Prospect can tap into. So, uh, certainly, um, admire Kipta and their offering and the great organization. But I just don't see where we can use the funds at this point, point in time. So I'd like to have a little more time.
Well, and, and I appreciate and respect Greg, your view on that. I, I've got a contrary view. I think it's going to be to our advantage to get on board, uh, at this point for our first report and to assist us as we move forward. As I, I really echo what Chris said earlier. You know, none of us are going to become, no matter how much time we spend on this, none of us are going to become as expert as the folks at Kipta. And, and this is a very modest fee. I think it's going to be a, this asset and, and I'm, I'm, I've, uh, urged the council to move forward this evening with approval of the, uh, proposal and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
And Mr. Mayor.
I wasn't going to say anything. Good.
Um, I just have one question. Have we spent any money so far?
No.
Okay.
So I, I echoed Doug and, and Chris. I have a little bit of confusion. You all can feel free to, to help walk me to the door on this, but for $12,000 of 1.2 million, there's a lot of discussion about an unknown on how to spend ARPA funds. And we just don't know when we can do it. And our city tends to do a lot of kind of like circular logic, like we can't quite get out of that loop. Um, in that this contract will allow us some backing of an actual government agency working with other cities. And I've probably done more research than anybody in this room on the ARPA spending. Um, and I feel pretty confident being able to say that, that it's hours and hours besides probably Chris and Danielle. But, um, of, and there are many things we can do in the city. Any thing you put your feet on in terms of sidewalks. Almost the entire parks budget. There's a huge portion of forestation that can go in that. Our paving can go under the loss revenue type stuff, but somebody's got to figure that out. Um, and for $12,000, a lot of these concerns, it, it just, again, this is my opinion. A lot of the concerns are addressed through the contract. So there's a hesitancy to do it. But the only way we get to an answer is if we engage and it's free to us. That's the part that I'm a little confused on. So we're using, if, if people in the room think we can't spend ARPA money on anything, well, then we'll spend $12,000 of ARPA funds to tell us we can't spend anything. But we didn't spend any money to get to that. But what's probably going to happen is we're going to be able to spend a really healthy portion of that on things the city can use and need and want. We've been talking about kind of mobility around the city. These are great opportunities. And to start, I, I, I don't know how long anybody will be at the city, but that the fact that they're going to do it for five years at a minimum, or if it goes out to 10 years, Danielle's still going to be there chugging along or whoever's after her, doing this report for us. I'm sorry, I'm seeing, in my opinion, I, I've just got to say for the citizens listening, I mean, this is a pretty, this is the most no cost, all benefit plan I've ever seen that a government would be able to give. So I'm hands, feet, everything in on that.
I agree with you, Sarah. This, this is a no cost insurance policy to make sure we don't spend money, uh, that we shouldn't be spending. And at the same time, not avail, avail ourselves of, of funds that we can, we can use. I see no reason to put this off. I, I think we need to vote now.
I disagree that it's, it's no cost. We're look, we're looking at put, putting a million bucks into, uh, an interest bearing account, which will get us what? 10,000 a year. So we end up with, I don't know, four years worth of that. Uh, there's a cost associated with it. It's not free. And we spent 12,000, yeah, an interpretation. We go $12,000.
But that's of, of the 1.2 million that, that you're saying we won't be able to spend. And I'm not trying to argue. Please don't take that. I, I honestly want to know, like, as a real, uh, just help me.
You talking to me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry.
What, what's the question? I'm sorry, Sarah. What's the question?
I'm, uh, the, the honest question is the, you, you said there, there was a cost. And I guess I'm trying to see if I'm misinterpreting. I just want to make sure I understand. I'm, I'm trying to understand you, Frank. I'm just trying to, the, because you're saying it could be an interest bearing, which it can. So if we make 10K off of it, then we've actually, strangely enough, then we've made money. Uh, but the 12K.
I'm saying, Sarah, I'm just saying there's an option. The, and from what I read, and now your points, if you've researched this in depth. Uh, and quite possibly we do have something, but I, I have read it also in depth, three times I've read it. And I have yet to come up with a project that fits the current criteria. Now, I'm all for returning tax money to our residents. I'm a hundred percent for that. But I'm not, I'm not convinced that we have anything that will end up being eligible. And I think there's a, there's a risk return with the $12,000 add. That's all. And I think, I think that postponing this vote would probably be a good idea.
But do we, I just understand that we always pay 1% of the funds that we actually receive. Is that correct, Danielle?
Well, I, based on your two allocations, so we, we charge 1% of this first allocation. And then if you, and then 1% of your second allocation. So if for some reason it, you, you all decide not to utilize the second allocation that you all draw down, then we would not move forward with that.
Okay. And from, if, from what Frank's saying, he thinks there's a chance that we're not going to be entitled to, to receive any funds. If we don't receive any funds, we've, we've paid, we've paid funds that we've already received. I mean, we're paying 1% of funds we've received and then we can't spend any of the rest of it, is what I hear Frank saying. And what Sarah's saying is there's, there's a lot of things we can spend it on. So I think we're going to get expert advice on what we can spend it on, what we can't spend it on. I, I see it as a no proposition.
There might actually be, and Danielle, you might be able to comment. And it's okay if you can't, but this might help because I'm trying to, um, I'm trying to see, to step into Frank's shoes and see it from that perspective. And I think even among, um, so maybe you can help me if I spit out a couple of things. I think we might actually have the 12,000 just in projects on the top of my head. So parks maintenance due to COVID use. So in COVID, if you had trails that degraded.
Yes.
Um, repairs, those kinds of things. So.
But you've got to be able to show that and prove it was COVID related as of now.
Well, we have massive increase in use in parks. So I think that's the question to Danielle is going, I've got probably over $12,000 in those types of repairs, simple things that we dedicate taxpayer money to. And Danielle, maybe that's something you can comment on is, is we go, okay, so Sandra's saying, hey, how do you, do you have, one, do you have to prove that it's, and I know we're taking a very specific example. Maybe you can help us. Do we have to prove it's COVID increased? Can you talk, talk about that?
Yeah. So, so again, there, there's, you can do this two ways. You know, you, you argue that, you know, you state when you pass a resolution, you would, you would cite the specific language, um, as to, you know, explaining this as allowable use. You can cite, you prove this one of two ways. One, you document your increased usage of your parks. Um, and so if you want to.
How, how do you do that? How do you show that?
Well, again, that's something that you all, you all would have, as your parks department, I don't know, as the parks department, if, if they have noted that there was an increased usage. Um, again, again, a lot of people don't necessarily, there's not a ticket taker, right? When someone went, you know, utilizes the park, but as parks and, uh, crews and parks and park crews in, in cities and counties, they absolutely know when there's been increased uses of parks and, and they usually have about a rough estimate of how long, of how much, you know, they have. One of those primary markers is increased need for maintenance. You know, your usage has gone up if you've had increased maintenance costs. And so that's how you, how you justify that. So it's in that, in that avenue. Uh, but secondly, you also can utilize, again, just stating that the use of parks, you, you have this percentage of your population is 65 plus, this percentage of your population is disabled, this percentage of your population are, were children. Uh, and they're in, they, these are populations that were, are disproportionately affected by COVID. And therefore they needed to save outdoor space to engage and they're, and then you make, and then you are justified to spend money on a park. There was, there's actually a county that is utilizing that same framework. And to create a park that never existed. They're building a park that didn't exist, utilizing that same framework. So I absolutely think that there are ways that you can spend this money. Parks are an excellent example of how to do so. Um, you know, it, it, and, and not to mention this plethora of specific COVID related stuff related to. If, if there's assistance to families or assistance to businesses or vaccination sites, or, you know, however, there's lots of, lots of things that you can do. It's very, very COVID centric. And then there's, there's things that are connected to, to, um, to parks, to water, wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. And again, we would walk through, um, when, how those projects are documented as being eligible. But I absolutely do think that there are, you know, you might not end up finding something that, that the council supports to spend the full 1.2 million that you all received, but I do think that there is a substantial portion of your funds that you all could, could utilize it to benefit your community. I, I do think, whether or not you utilize Kipta or not, I do think that, that it is possible.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm going to suggest that this is a really good discussion. We, we've had good points made on sort of both sides of the issue. But I'm going to suggest that we move in the direction of, of voting because I, I think we, we know what the issues are.
With all due respect, I'd, I'd like to make one more comment.
Okay, let me finish my comment and then certainly, I, I think we know what the issues are. We know where we stand. I'm prepared to vote, but Greg, certainly I don't want to cut off any discussion.
Yeah, I just have one more thing, uh, to say. Uh, again, and this is kind of, uh, difficult for me to put in words. Uh, because I don't want it to sound like, um, well, I think Kipta is an excellent organization, as I said a while ago. So, uh, certainly the offering is great. Uh, however, I go back to, there's no rush. And there is another player and we all know who that player is. It's KLC. And I think we ought to give them the same opportunity that we have given Kipta tonight. We've got time, folks. We don't have to make this decision tonight. Uh, KLC is free. And I think we ought to hear what they bring to the table as well. We can make this decision next month or even a month later. And really not lose any ground. So I would just rather take my time and, um, have all of the things to look at. So.
I will make a quick comment on that. He is absolutely correct. KLC will absolutely assist. If you all have questions, they will absolutely answer any questions and advise you related to ARPA. That is 100% true. What they will not do is assist you through the reporting process or maintain any files or, 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 or information for you. But they absolutely 100% will provide advice. That's true. Absolutely. They're, they're excellent resource for that.
Well, I think that we should go to KLC with some of our questions relative to these projects that Sarah's identified and just get a read on it. We can always have a special meeting to do this. Uh, but I just think we're rushing it, rushing into it. Now, there are also a number of cities who have chosen not to rush into this thing and to put their money in the bank, uh, awaiting additional guidance from the IRS relative to how, um, liberal they are going to be in interpretation of their guidelines.
You will be required on that note, sir. You will be required to a, a single audit. And so anybody, if an entity receives over, uh, $750,000 in federal funds, you are subject to a federal single audit. So that, that is your, that will be the city's, um, responsible, that, that tying into the IRS, that, that, that would be how that, that checks and balances will work.
If I can give my advice again, uh, I, I, I really think you're risking dollars to say pennies. I, I really think you need this. This is an incredibly, um, a complicated matter. Uh, you've got the exposure of the city with regards to federal laws and the misuse of federal dollars. I don't think you can have enough insurance, uh, policy. I would want both KLC and Kipta and your attorney and everybody working in concert to make sure that it is done and done properly. And $12,000 compared to a million two and doing it properly and making sure that, uh, none of you get embarrassed, uh, in any way. Uh, that, that's just a very small amount to pay. The second thing is, uh, I always look at the credibility, the credibility, uh, that you're buying. And, you know, Kipta has, uh, been around for 50 years. It is a well-respected organization. If, uh, some federal, uh, prosecutor or whatever is looking at this and says, well, how, how did these yo-yos down there in Prospect, Kentucky spend this money? Uh, and if somebody says, well, the Kentucky Indian Planning Development Commission, that they advised them to do this. That's one thing. If they say, uh, Joe Schmo, who they never heard of, uh, said to do it, that's another thing. You're buying credibility when you do this, and I think that's, uh, well worth the $12,000.
I suggest we go ahead and vote.
All right. We'll take a vote on Doug's motion. We'll start with Greg Gillsman. How do you vote, Greg?
Since I'm early in the lineup, I'm going to say no.
Sandra Leonard?
No, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't vote for it next month or the month after when we know more.
Doug Farnsley?
I vote yes.
Don Gibson?
I vote yes.
Frank Fulcher?
Uh, no, I'm not a, and I'm not opposed to it. I'm just opposed to doing it now.
Sarah Odell?
If not now, when? I vote yes.
Okay. The vote is three to three and the mayor votes yes. So it's four to three and the motion passes.
Thank you, guys. If anybody has any questions at any time, please, y'all hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Danielle. Thank you for waiting so long too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the agenda is resolution number three, series 2021. This is the resolution for the swap of, uh, some land that we own for some land that is owned by, uh, resident. Uh, the land that we would get is back at the end of Del Haven Road. The land that we would be giving up would be, uh, at the end of Timber Ridge Drive where the sewer plant used to be. Basically floodplain land. So I need a motion, uh, to.
Are you going to ask?
Do this resolution and then we'll have discussion. Does anyone?
Can I ask a question? John, can I ask a question?
No, no, no. Does anyone move to adopt the resolution? If there's no motion, then there's nothing to discuss.
Okay. You adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Now we'll have discussion.
All right, now we'll have discussion.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I like this idea. I want to swap the land, but it depends upon whether or not we could use the land for the purposes that I think we discussed, uh, back when we were doing our budget. Uh, for putting, uh, a barn there, some salt storage and some other things that I can't recall right now. So, um, what I'm thinking is that when we first discussed this, and I don't remember when that was, May or June timeframe, I thought we were going to first find out um, and make sure that we could use the land for the purposes that we want to use it for. So I didn't say that just right, but anyway, you, you understand what I mean, I think. So has that been done? Are, are we sure that we can use it for those purposes?
Well, it depends what you mean, whether we know that we can. As far as the physical layout of the land, we've looked at it, we've walked it. Yes, we could do it. It'd be ideal, really. Uh, the one thing that would still have to be done is we'd have to get it rezoned, because right now it's on residential and we would have to have it rezoned for the kind of purpose that we want to do, which is not residential. So there is that piece of it that would have to be done.
So John, would that fall, I'm sorry, would that fall on, on your shoulders, John? Because if we do this, uh, wouldn't that be a lot of work for you then to interact with the appropriate agencies and with Metro and so on and so forth in order to, um, and what's the word, Sandra, in order to?
Reszone.
In, in order to resolve it and everything, would that, would that something that you would have to do then and are ready to do?
I think that question really should go to our city attorney.
Yeah, it's a legal process.
Could you make swapping the properties contingent upon the zoning change going through?
That's an excellent question, Sarah.
Well, I've got a suggestion that when I read this, um, I recognize that the wheresses don't mean anything from a legal standpoint, except in public perception, possibly. I suggest that the title of this thing, that the salt storage verbiage for the title and the first two wheresses be deleted and that we, uh, take this resolution to swap the properties. The, those other items are significant enough to warrant additional discussion.
Well, I think also Sarah's question, though, is timely. If this were contingent on whether we could get rezoning, I think that it makes sense. If it's not, we're liable to end up with a piece of property that we can't do any of the things we intend. And I thought one of the components of this was to have our attorney look into whether or not rezoning was, was even possible. Metro tends not to get excited about things like this. And the other part of this property, it is right near a water drainage area. And I don't know if anyone has looked into the riparian aspects of it.
Well, I'm not sure how any of us could predict with confidence that applying for rezoning would make it happen.
Well, but that isn't different from LDG with their option that was predicated on the Timber Ridge property. And they would not take ownership of the property unless they got the rezoning. That is not an atypical component in a document, and that's why I thought Sarah's question was so good.
Well, we could make that a part of the resolution, but in terms of actually, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you at all. I'm just thinking out loud here. In terms of actually exchanging the properties, uh, the only way to satisfy that contingency would be to have the current owner of the property have it rezoned and then go forward.
John?
I would.
That could be attempted.
I would support, as I suggested earlier, that, that this, uh, resolution be strictly at, uh, an issue of transfer of the property without any contingencies. I mean, it.
Well, the issue with that, though, is if we end up with that and can't use it, what is the value of it to us?
Well, we can't use what we're trading for.
Yeah, Frank's right.
Exactly.
Well, parts of it, I agree with you.
So, uh, would, would we need to, uh, propose an amendment at this point to delete the title and the two, first two wheresses? Not tie this to anything except a real estate swap?
I like that idea.
Chris, do we need to do something?
Well, first, I don't recall, uh, Sandra being asked to rezon the property. Uh, if I was asked to do that, I, I missed it, but I, I didn't do that.
I don't think we were talking about rezoning it specifically. I think we were talking about looking into whether or not it could be rezoned for this purpose.
Okay, if you want me to do that, I'll be glad to. Uh, incidentally, I, I handled the largest rezoning of a piece of property in Jefferson County. So, you know, I'm, I'm not unfamiliar with that. I, I can do that. I just don't really remember being asked to do it. Um, I, I don't get excited either way. I don't think it's a legal issue. If, if, if you want to take the two wheresses out and just have a trade, uh, I, I think that's fine, Frank. Uh, I don't think, I think it's really what the sense of the council is, and you can do it either way. But I'm, I'm your humble servant and I will do it either way you, you want me to do it.
Well, as I said, I could, I could support it if we, uh, change the title and, and delete those wheresses. Uh, leave rezoning for another day and, and the, and the use of the property for another day.
That piece of property is, is surrounded by other property, large chunks of property that one of these days will be developed. And, and I think it behooves the city of Prospect to have a presence there to perhaps have some say in the direction of future developments.
Or annexation.
Frank, did you want to change the title also to be consistent with taking out your two wheresses?
Yes, the, the second line in the title.
Right.
Dealing with the, um, salt thing.
Frank and Don make a compelling argument, so you've got me, you've got me there.
Yeah, actually, I think you did a good job. We would have to annex this. This is not in the city of Prospect.
Chris, are you, Chris, are you clear on, uh, what it is that we need to delete?
Uh, yes, you're, you're talking about deleting the second set, uh, sentence uh, at the title and then the two, first two wheresses. And that, I think it does exactly what Frank suggested, which, uh, again, you can do it either way. It's not a legal issue. It's a policy issue.
I, I support those changes.
Can we strike those right now?
Yes.
Okay, they are stricken.
Actually, would we amend it?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to amend it?
I move that we amend the motion to delete the clauses that Frank recited and that Chris is stricken on his copy.
So then we need two votes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so, so be it. Now we have a resolution authorizing the mayor of Prospect to exchange and transfer real estate. And the body then begins wher as the Joy Lee LLC. Continues on. That's what we've got.
So moved. We need to vote on it.
I make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Now, let me do a roll call since we're dealing with something kind of important here. Greg?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
What do you know? Thank you.
Six oh. That looks good. Six oh. I love it.
Frank, thank you for your input. That concludes tonight's entertainment. As far as I can see, is there anything else that you want to discuss? Are any citizens present that want to comment? Before we consider a motion to adjourn, I want to thank John Carter for doing something that nobody believed he could do, which was.
He did it well.
Good job, John.
Way to go, John. Thanks, John.
Hopefully I won't have to do this next month.
While I'm throwing kudos John's way, I just want everybody to know that behind the scenes that you don't see every day, he's doing a great job. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Good to see you all. Bye.
Jimmy Durante.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.